Welcome to the November the 6th, Abingdon Town Council meeting. We have some special guests tonight, but before we get started, I would like to ask everyone if they will look at their phones and turn them off or put them on vibrate. And I am going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Humphries.
Here.
And Mayor Lo.
Here.
And let the record reflect that all five council members are present.
All right. We have some special guests tonight. We have Dalton, Brayden, Isaac, Jack, Ian, Colin, and, help me, Hanes. And they're with Tribe 222, and they're getting their citizenship badge, and we are going to ask them if they will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let me get my November agenda pulled up. Okay, so we are now counsel to the approval of minutes, and I would like to know if you have any corrections or a motion.
Mayor Lo, I'd like to make a motion if there are no corrections, but we go ahead and approve that, please.
I'll second it. Second a motion.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Lo.
Aye.
At this time, I would like to ask the council, we need to have a closed session, and our attorney is here. Would you like to move that closed session up to E., or would you like to have public comments first?
Let's let him go, and we'll have a closed session. I move that.
Okay. Move that we have a closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended Section 2.2-3771A7 for the purpose of discussing actual or probable litigation involving personnel.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hi, Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Lo.
Aye.
Okay, council, do I have a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Second.
Does the clerk have the certification?
I don't have it. You'll give me just two seconds. Sorry, I had it, and then I think I'll tell you. I'm trying to think of a quicker page.
Whereas the council of the town of Abingdon, Virginia has convened in a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions set forth in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, requires a certification by the town council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, and now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Abingdon, Virginia hereby certifies that to best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the town council. And if you agree, please say so by affirming I so certify.
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 Now we have a motion and second to go back into open session.
I'll second a move.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
All right, hang on just a minute. I think we did it a little backwards.
We already had, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Craig, and a second by?
Ms. Patterson.
Ms. Patterson. Okay. And that's to come in, right?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Patterson. Mr. Patterson. Mr. Craig, my apologies.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
Aye.
Okay. Council, do we have a motion?
I move to instruct Penn Stewart to enter intermediation in the pending EEOC complaint.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Lo.
Okay. At this time, the council will hear a public comment from those citizens registered to speak. Please come forward to the podium as your name is called. Restate your name, state your address, identify any organization you represent. Each speaker will have three minutes for comments. Each speaker will be timed by the town clerk once your comments begin, and you will be given a cue when one minute of speaking time remains. Speakers are reminded that neither council members or staff will address questions or otherwise engage with speakers during the public comment period. And just to be clear, the clock will start after you state your name and your address and identify the organization. Okay. The first person will be Jim Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Moore, 133 College Street. For decades, Abingdon has had a sterling reputation across the state, India both small towns and this state. The past two years, however, we've had a cloud hanging over us, lots of issues. I won't go through all the litany of them, but there have been several. Most recent dark cloud on the horizon developed after your last council meeting and your closed session. Since that closed session, there have been rumors flying all over this town, county. This person suing that person, this one suing this one, oh, the two together. It's time to come clean and tell the town, the citizens, what is really going on here with these closed sessions. We need to get things out. The rumors floating around are soiling this town's reputation. We need to clean the air and get things straight, be honest with the public, and tell us what's going on. Enough's enough. Thank you.
Mr. Emmett Geary.
May I adopt your, my name by incorporation of reference, but in any event, Emmett Geary, 171 East Main Street. I'm here on behalf of the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation of Abingdon slash Washington County, Virginia Incorporated. We are trying to put some public restrooms on the north end of the park, next to the Vista Center. We went to the planning commission. It was, we were going to the planning commission, but it was, they couldn't have a quorum.
One second, I think you might not be able to be heard.
Is my timer up already? He said he was gonna cut me off.
Yeah, I thought he was gonna cut him off.
He's threatening me already.
Okay. We're gonna start you all over again.
Okay, he took two of them here while he saw I was coming. Anyway, uh, we, uh... Not notified when the planning commission was going to meet, and I don't have any problems with that because the planning commission went ahead and passed our request for the restroom facilities. But now, the next step was to come before the town council, since these will be built on town property with town permission, so we would like to get permission from the town so we could proceed as soon as possible. Mr. Budney and his father, they have submitted plans. I think you all have them before you now have another copy that might be in color.
Get closer to the microphone.
And, uh, so you're welcome to that. And if you have any questions, I guess I could address them later, or there are two members of the, uh, on the board that members of this council, I think they could address any questions, so we've asked that you pass on our request that we build the restrooms as proposed. The, the doors on the plan, I think show a mayor follet door, we probably have wooden doors, but other than that, should be basically the same. Do I have any more time?
You're still green.
Okay, well, I wanna surprise you. Thank you very much.
Joe Levine.
Joe Levine, 350 Greenspring Road. Earlier today, I sent an email to Greg Kelly. I copied everybody on the board, but I would like to read that into the, the records. Dear Greg, by way of this email, Friends of Abingdon Incorporated, FOA, request that you, as the representative for the town of Abingdon, the per mittie, require a search for the reported graves prior to finalizing the memorandum of agreement under the section 106. And I believe it is an agenda item for tonight. During the September 26, 2017, section 106 review conference call, the Virginia Department of Historic Revues requested that an archaeological survey be conducted to look for the reported graves. DHR further recommended that local residents be used in the search, i.e. the Washington County Cemetery Preservation Association and local residents familiar with the meadows. Also during the meeting, Mr. John Edens of the Advisory Council of Historic Preservation graphically described what can happen when graves are found during excavation. A summary of the report, the results of that meeting were published in the September 27 Bristol-Herold Courier, and there was a link to that if anybody'd like to see it. Locating graves before beginning excavation could prevent desecration of the graves and actually save time and cost by preventing stoppage of construction after, after construction begins. During the October 26, 2017, section 106 review meeting, Ms. Rosenbaum said the town intends to proceed and will not take the recommendations of DHR. We struggle to understand why you are so reluctant to take advan, not, why you are reluctant to take advantage of the generous offer from the Washington County Cemetery Preservation Association and local representatives to help search at no cost to the town. I also attached two video clips from the July 10 work session in the town council meeting. During the work session, Vice Mayor Rick Humphries said that the DHR was the gold standard and that we would follow what DHR would request us to do. The motion to rescind the RFP for ground penetrating radar that passed during the July 10 town council meeting was contingent on DHR recommendations. During the discussion of that motion, Mr. Humphries again stated, "We will do what the V, what is recommended by DHR. Please respect the sentiments of the town council and please..." Excuse me. "A town council and follow the recommendations of the DHR. We recognize that some of the cemeteries, well, some of the graves are..." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No more public comments, or no one else has signed up to comment, so we are at petitions. Public hearings and first reading of ordinances, none. Second reading of ordinances, none. Consideration of bids, none. Presentation of 2016 Economic Impact of Tourism Study, released September 2017. Jane Dearing, Director of Tourism.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me some time on your agenda today. Virginia Tourism Corporation, from time to time, contracts with the U.S. Travel Association to study and report the economic impact of tourism on the Commonwealth. They take an index of 17 industries, including lodging and restaurants and grocery stores and movie theaters across the board. And in 2016, Washington County figures, $103.8 billion were spent in tourism expenditures in Washington County, Virginia. And that's $264,000 a day in Washington County. Tourism in Washington County has grown to employ 1,200 people, and we experienced 0.5% growth in Washington County in 2016. And what you have up there, we love to make these lists. This was Budget Travel Magazine in 2016. It's gonna take me a long time to go through these slides, but I'll kinda cue you in. In Abingdon, if you, you take the Washington County figures, we don't have sales tax. We can't use that as a measurement. But what we do have is meals and lodging tax. And in two, this fiscal year, we're expending $4.1 million in meals and lodging taxes. That accounts for 27% of the total operations budget for Abingdon, and tourism plays a big role in that. Do you wanna do the math back, back into that $4.1 million? Anybody wanna venture a guess what, what the gross amount spent in our restaurants and lodging is? $58.5 million flowing in our restaurants and our lodging. So, uh, tourism is good for Abingdon. Next slide. This is one of our ads. You may never see this ad because we don't advertise to you, 'cause guess what? You're already here. We spend our advertising dollars in what we call our drive market, and right now, we're focusing on Knoxville, Charlotte, Atlanta, Chattanooga, Winston-Salem Triad, and Roanoke. We have visitors that come from there, and we're building up what we have there. We have a combination of digital, print, and of course, our online presence. Virginia Tourism Corporation is funded by the General Assembly, and they're an important resource and partner for us, not only for research, like I cited earlier, but also as a source of grants. And we get about $50,000 a year to supplement projects. So, when anybody's talking about that benefit, please support the gen, the funding from the General Assembly. Okay, next slide. So, what does, next slide. Okay, we'll just proceed anyway. So, Abingdon Tourism Department is divided into our visitor center staff, and that's eight to 10 part-time people who are staffing that seven days a week, nine to five. They're answering everything from where do I vote tomorrow to where, what, where would you eat lunch today? So, a myriad of questions. Right now, the visitation in the Finley House at, um, at the Creeper Trailhead, on a daily basis, is getting more visitation than the 335 coming, so I just thought that was interesting. They're open seasonally four days a week, and we're open year-round seven days a week. Then we have group sales. Monica is on the road selling Abingdon as a destination to motorcoats, which is coming back strong, small groups, and incidentally, um, you know, we have the long-distance hikers, we have the Yeti runners, so that is money coming here. And currently, we can account for $82,000 a month coming in from group sales. This is a conservative figure because we depend on hotels self-reporting those groups 'cause not everybody checks in. Monica trains these groups, so the next time they come in, they don't need her to bake, to handhold like she does the first time. And our market studies show that most people who come to Abingdon come back multiple times. Then we have events. Coming up is the January Jams. January Jams were created, uh, this will be the sixth year that they've been going on, created because January's dead. We had, rain was closing down, uh, 128 McCon was closing down. There was no reason for these businesses to be open. Well, Robin Mullen said last month, she owns Forget Me Not, she said January Jams saved me and allow her to be open. Rain is now open, 128 is now open, and some others are. The meals and lodging tax in January only, January, compared to five years ago and this current fiscal year, meals and lodging tax revenues have gone up 25% in January alone. During the Thursday Jam 10-week session, gone up 12%, and if you wanna know what the balance of the month in that whole year was, it was 9%. So, two spikes, I think, directly attributable to tourism activities. And the events that tourism does are twofold. They are to give the residents more things to do, but we also have an eye toward attracting people from outside the Mar, Abingdon. Marketing is our third full-time position, and that person supports events and group sales as well as markets to the leisure traveler, and leisure travel is extremely important to us. Go to the next slide, please. So, there's three types of media that you have. One is the owned media, and that's your website. You own it, you can do what you want to with it. The other is paid media, and that's when you buy an ad somewhere, and the other, the third is earned media. We're putting a great deal of time and energy into earned media, and I'll tell you why. Earned media is written by a third party. It's not written by you. So, a writer comes into town, we tour them, we, we have speakers come in, we take them to barter, we give them a backstage tour, we take them to the Creeper Trail, whatever it is they wanna do, we accommodate what they, their, their desires, um, in the hopes that they will go back and they will write a, an article on us. Third-party authored articles, blogs, videos are more trusted, and they're more shareable. We had a Virginia Creeper article, um, last month that starred, that was written by the AP. It was picked up by, so far, by the Washington Post, the Winston-Salem Journal, the U.S. News and World Report, and the Florida Times-Union. It works. Okay, so these are just three examples of earned media. And then, I don't know if you saw the Southern Living article that came out, were part of adorable places to spend Christmas. Next slide. So, connectivity and community. Our average hotel stay right now is two and a half nights, and we want to build on that. And one of the ways we can build on that is having more product. More, by product, I mean, let's take Adventure Mendota. They're not in Abingdon, but guess what? They have to stay here and eat here, make a side trip to Adventure Mendota, who's delivering great customer service right now, and then spend, come back and spend the night. So, that's the example of more product. We also wanna be the hub and spoke. Abingdon needs to be the hub, and we need to partner with complementary places, and we're working on itinerators to do that, to extend their stay in Abingdon. Okay, next slide. I just thought that was a cool shot. Next slide. That was the Emmett Geary slide back there. So, what's next? We will continue, we are continuing to build groups, events, and leisure travel. And in order to do that, you have to stay innovative with your messaging. The third-party, uh, the earned media is one of those. Also, in the next year, thanks to funding from the VTC, we will be revamping our website because, when we built that only four years ago, desktop was the main way that people looked at websites. That is no longer the case. Almost 70% are using mobile devices, and they're not getting the best experience with our website, so we're gonna, um, capitalize on mobile. And also funded by the VTC, we're doing an earned media campaign where a marketing person will be visiting and doing desk-side interviews with writers in hopes of inspiring them, followed by their visits to Abingdon. And on the horizon, but not yet in the pipeline, we did a market study in 2012 that tourism had lived by, and the market study said that complete demographics of our visitor, where there were gaps, what we should capitalize on, how we should. And tourism has used that like a game plan. It's about time to do another one. So, that's, what I wanted to do is give you an overview of what we're doing, a little bit of why we're doing it, and say thank you very much because, uh, tourism is good for Abingdon, it's good business.
And, thank you. It's always good to hear that meals and lodging is up this year.
We live by that.
We live by that, but, um, I had, uh, had a chance to speak with Jane, and we'd talked about updating the website. I think you all read in your council packet that she has put an RFP out for doing a whole new website, but in the interim, um, they are in the process of taking the old businesses off of the website and putting the new businesses up. It might not have all the pretty pictures that it would have, but at least the listings will be correct.
We've done three major updates. One is to the visitor guide that we mailed, that's our main print piece. We have updated that, and that's now in the print. We did that, the impetus of that is that we had a major flea problem, and after being doused with flea stuff and a plumbing problem, the rest of the brochures were kaput, so that, that bumped that schedule up, but it was a good thing because it needed updating. The second thing we're updating, I don't know if you've seen the tear-off maps for dining and lodging. We're redoing that. We're also, we've never had lodging on that same map, and it just makes, I was talking to the visitor center staff, they use that every day, all day. And now that you can give a reference, you're staying here, this is here, it's walkable or it's not walkable. And the website just happened to be last because those print pieces were first, but it is on the way.
Good.
Yeah. Any, anything else?
It's not a question, and there's a couple of things that you, to add to your list. AAA magazine in Maryland, uh, we had, there's an article in AAA magazine in Maryland.
Oh, yeah.
And I got a lot of feedback from them. I didn't even know it was in there. And then, um, uh, as far as organizations coming, the Chattanooga Ski Club came in. I don't think that they've talked to you all either. And then the other one is that Musa Loader Magazine is looking to do an article about, uh, about the, uh, the muskler grounds. They just finished one up for that they all went on, several of them went on horseback from the Cumberland Gap out that way, and so they're looking at doing something down here, and so Musa Loader Magazine.
And Johnson City, I'm glad you said that. Johnson City Press did a great article on the OVTA that ran today. Yep, so, this earned media, talking about it creates buzz that kinda gets a life of its own, so you get those articles, hey, we didn't even know this was coming for Christmas.
And so, to save the best for last, I received a letter from the Appalachian Long Distance Hikers Association. Did you receive a copy?
Yes. And did you like the last line, I think, of the second paragraph?
Very good. "On behalf of the Appalachian Long Distance Hikers Association, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and southern hospitality during the 36th ALDHA gathering in Abingdon, Virginia. The ability to once again host the annual gathering in the South has long been a goal of ours, and the town of Abingdon, Virginia certainly surpassed all of our expectations. Abingdon, Virginia's commitment to Appalachian Long Distance Hiker Association and keen attention to detail were instrumental in the success of this year's event. The town of Abingdon, Virginia truly has distinguished itself as a friend and partner with Appalachian Long Distance Hikers Association and the outdoor community, and we hope to continue our new relationship in the coming years. Again, thank you for all of your assistance during the 36th Appalachian Long Distance Hikers Association gathering, and we hope to see you in Abingdon at the 39th gathering in 2020."
That was my favorite line that come of that. And one of the things about... And one of the things about them, they had always, they always meet on a college campus because it's closed and this is a group that sometimes feels like they're shunned by the communities. So they're protected on a college campus. They were very nervous about being in a town and we helped them get over that. So that's thanks to everybody.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And one of the things that they did is they camped down at the muster grounds as well as had what they call a campfire where they did their, some of their annual awards and stuff in that location. And because of proximity to the higher ed center, they could just walk down the sidewalk and be right there at the... I don't know if they weren't accustomed to walking. And they don't go by the pronunciation. They go by Alda.
Yeah.
And you have to pronounce it that way, too.
Well, okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. And with that, I have consideration of council member to attend a meeting with Washington County Service Authority and Washington County Board of Supervisors. Date not yet confirmed for meeting. Gregory W. Kelly, Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is something that we've been exploring for some time and we've had past meetings with council members in attendance with the Washington County Service Authority. They are looking for sewer expansion that would involve some type of partnership with the town of Abingdon to be able to provide sewer to certain areas within Washington County. They've asked at this point in time, just for one council member, they're going to have one Board of Supervisors member and a member or two from the Service Authority Board just to have another follow-up conversation about it. And I just need to know who the council member would be. I know that we've been dealing with some sewer issues in our infrastructure committee meetings, which we have one of those coming up this week. And, you know, Mr. Craig is on that committee. But certainly, any council member who would be interested in attending whatever meeting we can get lined up. And again, it would be very preliminary just to discuss the concept. There would have to be lots of studies done before this could take place. And I think I've advised council before on the fact that we need to be very careful in not losing certain leverage that we have with Washington County in this regard. But nonetheless, I'm open to having the discussion if council wants to name one council member to attend with me and other staff. Mr. Bowle would likely attend, as would Sarita Moore at the sewer plant.
You know, we started this, Greg, Randy, Jason and I met once. And then we have met, we met with Robbie Cornet before that. And so even though they've asked for one, I think if another council member wants to go, they're going to have to have two because I've got the history that a new council member doesn't have. And so, you know, if another council member would like to go, you're certainly welcome to volunteer.
And that's fine. I'd be happy to pass along and they will likely pick two members. If we have two, they'll have two.
I think Wayne's got the expertise, if he would be willing to.
I'll be happy, Bob. You're on the infrastructure committee too. So if you want to go.
Sorry, Bob.
That's all right. I thought he's got more experience than I do. Okay, I'll be glad.
So the mayor and Mr. Craig, okay, thank you.
Anything else, council? Okay. And we are down to number three. Review investigation of reported meadows graves as recommended by DHR and reevaluation of ground penetrating radar. Cindy Patterson.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to touch on some things in regards to the investigation of reported meadows graves. Mr. Levine outlined some of that, I think, this evening and talked about it. And I just wanted to give like a timeline so that we could get this on the record and let the citizens know what's going, you know, what's happening and what had happened in the past. During the October 7, 2015 public hearing, Mr. James Grossclose at 488 Greenspring Road reported that there was a cemetery on the property and the tombstones were not in place any longer. And actually, I was in that meeting and I heard him there and that's also on record. For months, Wayne and I have asked for the survey be conducted to search for graves at the meadows. And with all due respect, Mr. Kelly has listened and he's also been informing the town council that we can't get on the meadows property. And we needed permission from the Army Corps of Engineers and we learned that that was a different outcome, that it was incorrect. On June 26, Claire Trent wrote, "There is no Department of the Army Corps that prohibits a property owner to utilize and/or maintain their property." Mr. Craig was also told this in his conversation with Jennifer Frye. Another part of the timeline, during the July 10 work session, Mr. Humphries, Councilman Humphries, Vice Mayor, said that DHR is the gold standard and that we should follow what DHR would request. The motion passed at the July 10 town council meeting regarding ground penetrating radar was made contingent on the DHR recommendation. During discussion on that motion, Mr. Craig asked about searching for graves at the meadows, to which Mr. Humphries again stated, "We'll have to go by DHR." During the September 26 Section 106 review conference call, which Mr. Craig attended, Ms. Harmon presented a video of Ms. Grossclose, who is the mother of Mr. James Grossclose, who used to reside at 488, I'm sorry, reside at 488 Greenspring Road. Ms. Grossclose talked about the graves being on the meadows as well in that video. During that September 26 Section 106 review conference call, DHR requested a survey be conducted to search for reported graves and recommended that local citizens familiar with the area join in the search. This was reported in the September 27 edition of the Bristol-Herald Courier. The last note I have here, plus a little paragraph here on the back, is during the October 22, I'm sorry, during the October 26 Section 106 review conference call, which I attended, with all due respect, Ms. Rosenbaum said, "The town intends to proceed and will not take the recommendations of DHR." I sat in on this October 26 Section Review Conference Call and the majority of the town council wants this. That's what happened when we met and we voted on this. And so we need to find the graves that are there. I'd like to know what we're going to do to pursue this. How can we rectify this?
Mayor, I sit in on the September 106 hearing and it's pretty clear to me that DHR believes, as some of us on town council do, that we should look for the graves and not risk turning them, finding them inadvertently during construction. I see no reason whatsoever. I don't see why it hurts anything. In fact, it seems to me it would benefit if they were found. Now, I don't know if they're there or not, but a citizen has said that they are and I don't see any problem at all. So I'm going to make a motion. I move that the town council instruct the town manager to arrange for access to the 70-acre Meadows Development Site for the Washington County Cemetery Preservation Association and local residents to search for graves as recommended by DHR.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I would have is people are saying it was by request. It's actually by requirement. My thing was if DHR required, they're our gold standard. Request and require are two different things. Request is one is, request is one often where they don't have any knowledge and they're just trying to say, well, if you want to do it, go ahead and do it. And the other is, requirement is, is something that you would do before permitting would happen because they know something is there. And so, you know, there's two different things between require and request. And I said, whatever that they require, that's our gold standard and that's what we should do. As far as I know, unless Mr. Kelly has received it, we haven't received anything that said any of that from DHR, have we? Or have we?
No. The current MOA specifically references this area and identifies what monitoring is supposed to take place. And I'll briefly set that forth and provide, if council has not seen this, we can certainly provide it to you. But in that ridged-lined area that Ms. Harmon identified, they are requiring that a historic archaeologist that meets their criteria and their qualifications be on-site to monitor the excavation as it takes place. It's to take place in a certain way. It's limited to eight inches of dig with special equipment, with box blades as opposed to the typical blade and rubber tires on the heavy equipment to do this. The thing I have to point out to the council is I don't have the legal authority to compel the landowner to allow third parties to go upon property which the town doesn't own. This area is on the Marathon property and I inquired if they would allow us to do that. And I'll pass this out. But they are clearly not in agreement to do that and think that we've gone overboard in terms of doing everything in our power to make sure that we're complying with what is in an acceptable MOA. There are other issues with doing this, one of which, we're having the utmost qualified person on-site to actually monitor this. That's licensed and insured so that there are no liability issues for third parties going upon property. And I will tell you, we've been made clear by the Corps and DHR and ACHP that if something is discovered, the project will come to a halt until that issue is resolved. And the landowner, Marathon, is willing, they realize that and they have no control over that. If something is found, they will have to stop. So I present you with a letter based upon inquiry of Marathon in terms of whether or not that they would allow this to occur upon their 40 or their 30-some acres of land. And they will not allow that at this point in time because they feel like they've spent two years of going over and above what is required to comply with this, getting this MOA in place.
I read, council, I read the email that Mr. Levine sent today and I noticed that Ms. Jennifer Frye with the Army Corps of Engineers was not an address E. So I called Jennifer and I asked her where they were as far as this MOA is concerned because I had not sat in on any of the conference calls that have happened over the last however long. And she said that she has received comments from ACHP and that basically it would be adding standardized language that is in the federal government regulations. She said that DHR has not submitted anything in writing and that as of now, she hasn't received it. Although she received a communication from Greg Laboud that he is awaiting comments from the third and last reviewer within DHR. And apparently, at DHR, they have to have three reviewers before they can submit their comments. So their comments have not been submitted in writing. Conference calling and the discussion was a discussion. So she said that she would absolutely be in touch with Marathon and town's management once she receives DHR's recommendation as well as adding the standardized language from ACHP.
So when you say, Ms. Lo, that discussion, and Mr. Kelly also have a question for you. This comes to you as well. When the discussions were taking place amongst all the parties involved about the MOA, was there any discussion or anything in writing whatsoever that stated that what Ms. Frye said, that there's nothing wrong with, you know, we couldn't touch a blade of grass over there at the meadows? But they said they didn't, they didn't say anything like that. So was that not discussed in some of the MOA conversations that I missed?
Those conversations, as far as I know, and Ms. Rosenbaum may remember better than me, I'm not aware of anything that was reduced in writing, but there was everybody around that table that heard that specific comment coming from, it wasn't Jennifer, it was from...
It was from Claire Trent.
From Claire Trent at the Corps.
Oh, excuse me, Claire Trent.
Yeah. The first I ever heard of Jennifer Frye making any comment, she had not communicated with me in any shape, form or fashion, was when Mr. Craig brought to my attention that he had had a conversation with her and that she had made this statement that there was no rule against that. It's my understanding from the other conference calls that we've heard that they have specifically indicated that they have suggested that the parties might want to consider allowing somebody to come on-site to point out where these graves are. But they have also specifically said they cannot compel the town of Abingdon or the landowner to do that.
But there is a section in this, in this MOA that you all got a copy of that specifically spells out how Marathon has to proceed. And as Jennifer said, or Mr. Kelly maybe, that there's an archaeologist that is required to be on-site. And so they have spelled out the type of equipment that can be used and all. So we still don't have the final comment from the Army Corps of Engineers today.
Mayor, I understand what Greg said and I understand that the Corps can't compel the town to do anything. I heard that in the September MOA conference call. But they do, they did clearly, the DHR representative did clearly indicate a preferable way and what he recommended was to do exactly what my motion said. As a town council, I feel like we have a responsibility not to let somebody else drive this boat. We're in an agreement with Marathon Realty and we're supposed to be partners and we're supposed to get along. So it seems like to me, if the majority of town council wants this to be done, I think it should happen and I believe that Marathon would agree to it. Everybody in town that I hear talk about this wonders why, what is the problem? You know? Go out there and look at it and be done. Let's put it behind us.
I do have one more thing to say. This, I brought this up during the Women's League of Voters debate when I was running for council. It wasn't like, it didn't get brought up, you know, ever again. It was brought up by Mr. Grossclose. I brought it up during that debate. Unfortunately, it didn't get, it got videoed or audiod. But that disappeared. In other words, it didn't make it through. Something happened to it. Some type of audio interference. And so it's not something that has been not brought up in the past. And we were very sincere when we were talking about this. It's very important. I don't think that anybody in this audience or anybody on this town council can sit there and say, if one of your relatives was buried there that you would love for somebody to dig their remains up. I mean, that's disgusting. It's disgraceful. And that's my opinion and I'm going to stick with it.
More discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
I.
Ms. Patterson.
I.
Mr. Howard.
No.
Mr. Humphries.
No.
And Mayor Lo.
Resolutions. Resolutions of the Council of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia to establish a project for the Abingdon Urban Path Extension in accordance with Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures. Greg Kelly.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, and I'm going to call upon... Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and I'm going to call upon Mr. Bolick to come up and describe a little bit more specifically this. But basically, there is the possibility to apply for additional funds on the urban trail project to extend it to different locations than what the current plans state for. So we're under sort of a time crunch to make the application for that. If we don't make it now, it's my understanding it could be two years before we can proceed with that again. But I'll let Mr. Bolick fill you in further.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Greg did an excellent job of really bringing up the speech with that. As you know, we have our current urban path project that is getting ready to start construction very soon. If we don't, if we don't apply for more funding for VDOT for possible extension of the trail, we would have to wait two years to reapply. So I need the support of the council and the positive resolution to put with our application to move forward for a possible extension of the urban path.
Okay.
Mr. Bolick, would this slow down the current urban path that we have, or hopefully get started soon?
No, sir, not slow down at all. It's, they're independent from each other.
Very good.
So I would like to read the resolution. Whereas in accordance with Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures, it is necessary that a request or resolution be received from the sponsoring local jurisdiction in order that the Virginia Department of Transportation establish an enhancement project in the town of Abingdon. Be it resolved that the town of Abingdon requests the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the Abingdon Urban Path Extension. Be it further resolved that the town of Abingdon hereby agrees to provide a minimum 20 percent of the total cost for planning and design right-of-way construction of this project. Be it further resolved that the town of Abingdon hereby agrees to enter into an agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation to provide oversight that ensures the project is developed in accordance with all state and federal requirements for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a federally funded transportation project. Be it further resolved that the town of Abingdon will be responsible for maintenance, upkeep, and operating costs of any facility constructed with enhancement program funds. Be it further resolved that if the town of Abingdon subsequently elects to cancel this project, the town of Abingdon hereby agrees to reimburse the Virginia Department of Transportation for the total amount of costs expended by the department through the date the department is notified of such cancellation. The town of Abingdon also agrees to repay any funds previously reimbursed that are later deemed ineligible by the Federal Highway Administration. Council, do you have any questions? I should ask if I have a motion.
I move adoption of the resolution.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Have you kind of identified any additional sites?
We do have a preliminary sketch. I've tried to call it together from previous discussions when the first urban path kind of came along and from our comprehensive plan and other planning documents. So we have tried to tie it in from the muster grounds, there's a western side from the muster grounds kind of to the higher ed community college area, and also an eastern side that kind of goes from the Park Street area. And our goal was to ultimately tie into the Pana Cellar Nature Trail and eventually get to the Coon Center. I think that's a...
It's the right direction.
That's a pretty, pretty good goal there.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Look.
Aye.
Number two, resolution, resolution. Resolution of the Council of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia, supporting and authorizing the town manager to submit an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program in the amount of $306,902 for FY 2019 for two projects. Wait just a minute, guys. Wait just one minute. And authorizing the town manager to take necessary and certain actions in connection with such projects. Matt, will you come up here? I'm sorry that I forgot to give, but will you give each one of these a pen, please?
Thank you.
That's my fault, I should have done that after the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any other Boy Scouts, give them the remaining pens, and thank you all for coming. Okay. Okay, now, Mr. Kelly, thank you.
Well, Mr. Bolick did such an outstanding job on the last one. This does involve, I'll let him speak specifically to it, but this does involve two sidewalk projects that we would like to do, which come under VDOT's H-SIP program, which is highway safety, and it's a, I believe, an 80/20 match as well as...
Well, I'm very excited about these two projects. Also, these, this is a highly competitive program throughout the state, and if we are awarded these two projects, that is 100%...
100%.
On VDOT's cost. So we are very, very excited to put these two applications in, and I do want to give some notice to my predecessor, John Do, who now works with VDOT, contacted me and really made us aware of this, this is a yearly deadline for this program, so we made sure to get our application in for that. The two sites, I think, obviously make extremely good sense. There's a section of sidewalk on East Main Street between Hillman Highway and the Family Dollar that is missing. I think that's a very laudable goal to try and build that sidewalk. And our second location is the Clark Street area there in front of Munchkin Park. That area's been talked about for sidewalk for quite a while, and if we can do the whole length of Clark Street from White's Mill to Court Street, and of course, get VDOT to help finance it, that would be, I think, a win-win for everybody.
And so it's funny that you would say that because we got an email from someone who just requested that. I forwarded the email to Matt, but the, she was talking about the danger of going to the Family Dollar, and she asked if we would look into that, so I'm assuming that you probably did.
And one of the other things is you do move along with that project. A good connector to that would be down to the Exit 19 area. Those hotels and motels down there are continually getting longer-term people, people working on projects, you know, be it VDOT projects or whatever other projects that might be, building projects might be going on. They're staying weeks at a time down there, and they bring their families, and their families are walking back and forth from down, from down at the, you know, Quality Inn and down in there, that area, up to Family Dollar Store also. Well, even as far as there, I've even seen people coming and going that went all the way down to food country. They're probably going the other way now to Walmart, but they weren't used to going to food country.
I'll take a stab at that, Mr. Humphries, and that's a good point, but that is something that Matt and I and the town staff have talked about with VDOT already in terms of a smart-scale project. And it would have to be, it's recommended that we apply in phases because it involves not only sidewalks but extension of pavement down in that area. But that's something that will be, we think we will be applying for that in the upcoming of smart scale.
Yes, we will. We most definitely will be applying for smart-scale projects, and that's something you'll see early next year, that application timeframe will be in January, February.
Will you be trying to look for input on that from council also, or will it just be some things y'all develop in-house?
No, I think we'll try and get input from many different organizations.
Okay, good.
So I'm ready to read the resolution for the Council of the Town of Abingdon in support of an application and authorizing the town manager to submit such application to the Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program in the amount of $306,902 for fiscal year 2019 for two projects, and to authorize the town manager to take necessary certain actions in connection with such projects. Whereas the town of Abingdon desires to submit an application for an allocation of funds up to X dollars for any funds provided by VDOT for the projects listed below, and no local match will be required for the town. Be it resolved by the Council of the Town of Abingdon as follows. One, the town council hereby supports the application referred to herein and hereby authorizes the town manager to submit such application to VDOT for funds from VDOT's Highway Safety Improvement Program for FY 2019 in the amount of $306,902 for the following project. A, the first project includes installing sidewalk and related appliances along Clark Street from White's Mill Road to Court. B, the second project includes installing sidewalk to connect existing sections of sidewalks along East Main Street east of Hillman Highway. And two, the town manager is further authorized to take such further actions and execute such further documents as may be necessary to submit the above application and to furnish such additional information as may be required for such application. Council, do I hear a motion?
I'll slow move. Second.
Now, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Look.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. If everything goes according to plan, you can see the sidewalk projects starting as early as next fall, maybe a September or October frame, I think, is reasonable. The urban path would take a little bit longer than that there.
Well, how about the other urban path where you let the RFP on it?
Yes, that is in, you approved the bids at your last meeting, and those bids have been forwarded to VDOT, and we're waiting for them to give the final approval, and then we'll have a, they'll have a notice to proceed, and they'll start soon after that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All business none, council member reports. Mr. Craig?
Mayor, I anticipate that someone will be contacting the town Sunset Communications to move the purchase of BPU along. We have to take some action, and I assume that's going to be in the December meeting, and then hopefully by the end of the year, the deal will, you take the action that we need to take.
Okay. Just want to remind everybody to come to the veterans ceremony, the dedication on November 11th at 11:00 at the Veterans Park. All are welcome. Thank you all for coming to the meeting this evening.
Mr. Howard?
A few things. I think I mentioned at the last meeting about the District III funding for our bus system, attending a meeting Wednesday in Bristol in reference to that, trying to figure out what we're going to do. And the second thing is, what Mr. Yerney proposed, will you take action on that council-wise? I think, I think it's already been through planning, but...
Yeah, we had been requested to eliminate matters not on the agenda from the agenda, so if Bob's inclined to do that, I think now's an appropriate time to do it. Planning Commission, I was there at the Planning Commission meeting, and it was unanimous decision of all present to allow them to proceed.
I think one of the things that kind of convoluted for the first time in forever, we didn't have a forum on the 21st of October. The meeting got bumped to the 30th of, I mean, the 27th of October, and it just put everything behind. So by the time that Mr. Yerney could try to get it on the, on the agenda, it wasn't able to get on the agenda, and they're trying to get this bathroom ground broken in before spring, and about the only way they can do it is if they can catch a little bit of weather and get some excavation done. So that's, that was the whole thing that Mr. Yerney was trying to accomplish, so I think it'd be a fine job.
I think it'll be a good asset to the town of Abingdon, to that park, have another restroom there, maybe people stay longer up there, and kids can play, and...
Me, too.
Absolutely.
I just don't, I hope you don't move the restroom, the portable restroom that's up on the top of the hill because veterans can't walk, some veterans can't walk all the way down even when the bathroom is completed. So until there's a bathroom up at the top of the hill, I would hope that we leave a bathroom up there.
Yeah, we were hopeful that they were going to do the one up there first, but I understand why he's choosing to do it at this location, to try to draw more people to that section of the park.
Right, and also I think he thought, and I think the Veterans Park, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Veterans Park Board looked at it, and as they looked at it, they thought that it would be also something that would benefit the visitor's center, when the visitor's center was also closed, the people would be able to stop, and, you know, you stop somewhere, you go dag on, there's not a bathroom open, well, this would allow a bathroom to be open so that they would be able to, to be able to access that from somebody coming to visitor's center, and maybe while they're, come out of the bathroom, take a, you know, look and see what the Veterans Park's about, might draw some people in there. And then also, as you all mentioned, bookend with the other porta-pott that's on the other end, so that gives restrooms on both ends that way. Pardon the pun.
So do I have a motion to approve the plans, council? Have you had a chance to look at them?
I think we've looked at them.
We've looked at them several times.
Have we voted to add it to the agenda? Do we need to add it to the agenda?
I don't think...
We don't have a consent agenda.
You don't have a consent agenda, so... I'll move that we approve the plan and allow them to proceed.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion?
What was the maintenance shed? What is that?
It's actually just the end, so that they can park. They're hoping to get a gator or something like that to haul people that are, that cannot walk on their own, kind of like what you all furnished during the, you know, when you go to Veterans Day.
Yeah, just be all the time.
Yeah, they're supposed to have it, there's the smoke holes, and they have someone that, you know, wheelchair companions.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Look.
Aye.
Okay. Bye, Mayor Humphries.
Right. I only have, there's only one thing that I have, I think, to report, and I'll remember the others after we get out of here, but I need to move, make a motion that we add to our agenda, the 15th work session agenda, the employee policy and evaluations.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any more discussion? So our work session meeting is November 15th about the Freedom of Information Committee, and we are adding to that agenda...
Employee policy and then evaluations.
Employee policy and evaluation dates.
And there's one more thing that's added to it, I forget what it was, but it seemed like there was to be three things, but I don't know what the other, there should be some little chip somewhere.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Look.
Aye.
Before we get to council, well, I am a council member, so I'm going to read a letter from Ms. Jan Rice Reeves. She serves on our planning commission and our Board of Zoning Appeals. Dear Mayor Low and council, effective this date, I write to inform you that I can no longer serve on the Abingdon Town Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Due to my husband's advancing autoimmune disease and his accompanying deteriorating lung issues, we will be relocating to an area with an elevation close to sea level and where the climate will aid his breathing. We have been traveling extensively to various locations over the past few months, searching for the best area in which to relocate. For this reason, I have not been able to fully engage in the many volunteer activities I normally enjoy. Relocating is not an easy task, for we love Abingdon and we will miss it. Although it is not our, it is our intent to retain our home here, we likely will be leaving away from this area for quite some time. I wish to thank you and the council for having provided me the opportunity to serve and wish you and your town all the best in the future. We really hate to lose Jan, she's been a great asset to the planning commission. We have a letter from the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. Mayor Low, thank you for signing on to the letter opposing a push for heavier and longer tractor-trailers. We appreciate the support. Keep in touch. Okay, thank you. And I received a letter from VML, and it is time, oh, sorry, the Boy Scouts left, but I don't think they're in the seventh grade anymore. The annual If I Were Mayor contest is, has been announced, and this is for seventh graders, and I have contacted EB Stanley Middle School to, I've contacted the principal to see if they would like to participate again this year. I think most of you remember that we had a winner last year from EB Stanley Middle School, and he was recognized by the governor during legislative day in Richmond, and he came and spoke to the council and read his essay that won the award for this region. So I have extended that invitation again. And Mr. Howard brought up the meeting, and I got a, I got a notice about the transportation meeting. However, I had two things at exactly the same day, so I would like to see if there's another council member that would like to attend the meeting on November... on November the eighth, and this is really about the public transportation, correct?
It's a funding issue about, that we're, we're in a different classification now about the receiving, the funds that we have in the past, that differ source.
Okay. So, I would like to ask that we include our treasurer in that meeting, it's November the eighth, have you been invited?
It's tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. It's, it's Wednesday, so it's-
Bristol, Tennessee.
It's November the eighth at two o'clock, and it's at the Planning-
On the Tennessee side, which I didn't understand that, but-
It's, you know where they hold the MPO meetings?
It's, it's Bristol, Tennessee Annex.
Tennessee Annex.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's close to Penn Sturte down in Bristol.
Yep.
So if another council member would like to attend with Mr. Howard.
We've got an infrastructure meeting that day.
That's in the morning.
Is it in the morning? What time is it?
Ten. Now, go on to that, and go on to this one.
You've gone in the mountain.
We've got, we've got Food City announcement that day.
That's a, if all those buses, if they do, if buses change, it could be cost prohibitive. There's a lot of people who really count on this, so.
It's going to affect next year's budget, because we-
I can, I can report backwards. I mean, I don't think it's going to be anything decided, I'm sure that I can, I can report backwards.
So you and Mr. Banner could go, and-
He wants to go, he wants to go.
Okay.
You go?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's a pretty good driver.
Very good, very good.
Does that mean you're a driver?
Very good, okay. So with that, I think that's all I have to report. Tomorrow is Election Day, and please get out and vote early, and as Ed used to say, vote often. But, counsel, we now have appointments to boards and committees. Would you like to go into closed session? We have Planning Commission, reappointment of Wayne Austin, who is eligible to serve another term.
I'll just move that we, that we, I nominate Wayne Austin for reappointment to the Planning Commission. He's actually chairman of the Planning Commission, as we, as it is right now.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Excuse me, Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Lo.
Aye. Virginia Highlands Small Business Incubator. Does anybody want to address this, or do you want to show back up?
Mayor, I think we should appoint somebody to the incubator board. I don't think we should leave it open, so if Gary Lester's still available, he's certainly qualified. I talked with Don Adams today, and he thinks we should fill it also, and his feelings won't be hurt, so I think we should go ahead and do this.
Well, my contention all along has been to appoint somebody within the town limits of this town, that's why I asked Gary if he'd be interested, and he did fill out application for that, and if, you know, if there's an opening on the county side, that I think Don Adams would do a good job, I think.
We all think Don would do a good job.
Yeah, well, I think Gary, Gary will do a good job.
Yeah, okay. Make that-
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we appoint Gary Lester-
I'll second that.
On the Small Business Incubator Board.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
It's staying. And we have several announcements. Open House November the eighth at Southwest Higher Ed Center. Town offices closed November the tenth for Veterans Day. Veterans of Foreign War will be selling poppies on November the tenth at eleven at Kroger, Food City, and Food Country. Veterans Day Memorial Parks Ceremony, November the eleventh.
And that's the, and that's-
Eleven, eleven, eleven.
Yeah, and that's a special, because it is the, help me, the-
The dedication of the missing-
Missing, yeah, the-
Chair.
Missing chair.
Okay. Seventh Annual Healing Warrior Initiative Dinner is also that night at Food City Headquarters, Rhodes Scholars, Abingdon. We will remember them. A Veterans Day Concert on November the eleventh at Southwest Higher Education Center, I mean Southwest Four-Eightth Center. Art Depot fundraiser, November thirteenth at Pizza Inn, Orchids, 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 November fourteenth at the Higher Ed Center. Town Council Work Session, November fifteenth at Noon. Marketing 101, November fifteenth at Virginia Highlands Small Business Incubator. Abingdon's Old Fashioned White Christmas Downtown Merchants Open House. An unveiling of Downtown Holiday Window Display, November nineteenth. Hearts of Gold Choir, November nineteenth, Post Office Park. United Way Celebrity Bagging, November twenty-first, local Food City Stores. Town offices are closed the twenty-second. A half-day and full days, I guess, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Shop Small Saturday, November twenty-fifth. Tree Lighting Ceremony, December the first at the Abingdon Farmer's Market. What's the, the?
Coon Center.
Oh, okay.
Coon Center.
Coon Center Express, December the first, Coon Recreation Center. Kiwanis Club of Abingdon Christmas Parade, December the second. An Evening of Christmas Music, December the second at Sinking Springs Presbyterian Church. Twenty-third Annual Community Christmas Program, December the sixth at Warner Theater. Over Fifty Expo, December the eighth, Higher Ed Center. Holiday Window Display Contest, the winner will be announced on December the ninth. We have, we didn't, we are not going to have a mayor's town talk November and December. I'm going to try to visit all of the participating merchants in these two events that Tanya Triple has put together. And there was something else that I, for the life of me, can't-
Mayor, there's going to be a concert at the Community Center this Friday night, November the tenth, it's sponsored by Friends of Abingdon and the Community Center, and it will benefit the Meals on Wheels, so I would encourage the public to support that. It's, it's going to have two local, fairly local entertainers, Taylor Thomas and Phantom is going to be there, which is an old-time rock and roll group, but I've had very good reports on them. Information is on the Community Center's website.
Okay.
Some, we don't normally note the passing of a lot of people, but I think, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the passing of Footsie Pratt, and Footsie passed away last week, and, and he was a true character wherever he lived, and he chose to live in Abing for a while, and, and I know he will be, he will be missed.
I agree. Last time I saw Footsie, he was at the Fairview Event, where Delegate O'Quinn showed all the children around, and your sister was giving tours.
Right.
Jill Dalton was giving tours, and he came, he was not able to get out of his car, but he absolutely came with his life, and it was, it was great to see him. The Kiwanis are celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary on November the eighteenth, and I think they're having a celebration at the Higher Ed Center. What organizations, do we have kind of a list of all the things that the Kiwanis Club has, has contributed to? The town, for instance, they built the pavilion at the park, and they do Plum Alley Days, they do the Christmas parade.
We would have to do quite a bit of research, but we can, you know, they may have something on there.
I would, I would say, yeah, I would think that they should provide it for you, I don't think you need to do a lot of legwork.
Right, I was just asking what they've contributed to that we can think of, our, our projects, but anyway, and just as a reminder to put Ms. Reeves' resignation on next month for the, another opening on the Planning Commission and on BBA.
And I, you know, we don't do this, and I think it's something we should do. I don't think that very often we send a thank you note, or a letter of appreciation, or token of appreciation to these people that give of their, give of their time, and, you know, Jan Reeves went to, you know, I guess she probably spent a hundred hours getting certified to be a planning commissioner, is about what it takes, and, and that's for volunteer, that's for volunteer organization, and so it took, it took a hundred hours, she was out of town about four, four or five times to get to become certified, so, you know, it's a lot of stuff just to volunteer to be on a planning commission, and so I think we should at least have a, you know, I don't know if we can have a token of appreciation. I know we used to have quite a few Abingdon gifts, you know, that we had, I don't know that we maintain those anymore, but if nothing else, a thank you note signed by the council would be appropriate.
Anything else, counsel? We are adjourned.